Dr. Cashwell will have our Health Committee report.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Board. Good afternoon. The first item I have for your information and for our discussion today is our Health Committee update. And so this will come in a number of parts. Dr. Tigan will start by providing an update from our Health Committee and an overview of recent discussions related to not just the vaccination efforts, but new VDH guidance will offer an opportunity for some discussion with the Board. And then we also have, along with that presentation, an update of the Health Committee's discussion related to athletics for the coming fall season, which actually is happening out of order in the spring. And then also some information from our school leadership team related to potential future programming for academic needs and learning loss as a result of that discussion. So a couple of parts to come with this. But without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. Tigan to begin the presentation. Dr. Tigan?
Good afternoon. Just one second, I'm going to be able to share my presentation. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. Ms. Robin Gilbert, the Supervisor of School Health Services, and I are here again today to share an update from the HCPS Health Committee. The Health Committee has met weekly for the past four weeks, with the Superintendent being updated after each meeting. At Monday's meeting, we received an update on the vaccination process and the expected timeline for first doses and second doses to be administered to staff. We also discussed the newly released interim guidance for pre-K through 12, school reopening, and how that might inform recommendations moving forward and the timeline for expanding in-person learning. The Committee also reviewed the mitigation strategies in place for our planned participation in fall sports. Lastly, a few highlights from the Division of School Leadership work around learning recovery will be shared by Dr. Grant. Our school nurses helped mix and draw up doses, administered the vaccine, and monitored those with allergies over the last two weeks. The event, organized under the direction of the Henrico County Manager, Jackson Bernard, was supported by Henrico, Goochland, Hanover, and Richmond City. As I shared two weeks ago, it was a regional effort, and it has been very well executed. During the first three days of the event, which were January 20th through the 22nd, between 47 to 51 of our school nurses staffed the vaccination event each day, and 1,417 doses were administered to HCPS staff. This week, we've had between 55 to 57 of our school nurses daily, and they've administered over 4,700 doses to HCPS staff. Next week, we expect 40 to 48 of our nurses to administer another 1,200 doses to our Henrico staff. While the capacity for the vaccination event allows for 3,000 injections per day, the limiting factor is the availability of the vaccine. Some appointments initially planned for Tuesday through Sunday of this current week were impacted due to changes in the supply chain of the COVID-19 vaccine. Though anyone scheduled for those days have been rescheduled and will receive their vaccine in the coming days. Additionally, we were able to add an additional 900 staff to the schedule yesterday and today based on unexpected increased capacity at the event. By next Friday, February 5th, every staff member who requested to receive the vaccine through HCPS and this regional initiative will have received their first dose. All staff have been offered the opportunity, and an informational town hall was held so that their questions could be answered. Multiple attempts were made to reach those who did not respond, giving us either a yes or no preference. We believe we have identified all employees who wish to receive the vaccine through HCPS at this time. Though receiving the vaccine between January 20th, those receiving the vaccine between January 20th and January 28th will be ready to receive their second dose between February 17th and 18th. The individuals receiving the vaccine January 20th through 22nd received the Moderna vaccine, and those being vaccinated Wednesday and Thursday of this week received the Pfizer vaccine. Thus, the majority of staff will hopefully have their second dose by February 18th. We anticipate those vaccinated between January 29th and February 5th will be receiving the Moderna vaccine, but this is subject to change. Any staff member receiving the Moderna vaccine on February 5th would not receive their second dose until March 5th. In other words, by March 5th, we believe that all staff who opted to be vaccinated will have received their second dose. As the levels of community... So let's look at what the new guidance that's been provided, the interim guidance from the VDOE. As the levels of community transmission remain at the highest level, this new interim guidance was released for how to reopen schools. This information was released on January 14th and shifted the focus from community transmission to school transmission levels, given the mitigation strategies that are in place. The transmission levels in our schools have been minimal in comparison to the community, and this has been attributed to the effectiveness of our HCPS health plan and the ability of our schools to implement mitigation strategies. The Health Committee did review the number of outbreaks among HCPS staff. Since December, we have noted four outbreaks. These outbreaks of one person transmitting COVID to another person within the work environment were all confined within work groups or teams. We have not had any outbreaks from interactions between teachers and students as of this week, including limited in-person instruction, as well as having Henrico Palt, the Henrico Education Foundation, and the YMCA providing childcare in our buildings and following our mitigation protocols. This guidance suggests that even at the highest level of community transmission, schools can continue to increase the number of students learning in person when combined with the extensive mitigation strategies that we have in place. However, when community transmission is at its highest levels and schools begin to increase the number of students being served in person, an eye must be kept towards the staffing and capacity considerations as noted on this slide in the upper left-hand corner. The Health Committee has repeatedly acknowledged the importance of robust and the robustness of our mitigation strategies. Even Dr. Avula has affirmed that Henrico's schools have exceeded the expectations provided by the CDC and the VDH in our mitigation efforts to ensure that our staff feel safe. Thus, the Health Committee continues to place significant weight on the third core metric of the previous guidance that was provided by the CDC and outlined in their CDC School Metrics. The Health Committee discussed when to resume previously planned expanded in-person learning timeline, given our current pause on that timeline due to our prioritization of recent staff vaccine efforts. The Committee examined scenarios that looked at the potential of returning staff after the first dose of the vaccine, as well as those of returning staff after the second dose. Understanding the fluid nature of vaccine availability and the early nature of the effort, there are a number of factors to consider. Based on the current vaccination schedule, all employees opting to be vaccinated at this point in time should receive their first dose by Friday, February 5th. All second doses should be administered by Friday, March 5th, given that vaccine supplies hold. The Committee examined one scenario in which, per the new VDH guidance and given our health and safety mitigation strengths, staff might return after the first dose, which potentially would be in mid-February. However, there were concerns brought forth by the Committee related to staffing impacts, as well as the potential of future pauses in in-person learning, the possible switch to some level of student asynchronous instructional time. Between that mid-February and early March, in order to facilitate the second dose logistics, as well as time for staff to deal with potential side effects that could mean that they might not be able to pass our health screening to be able to report to work in person. In other words, this scenario could create sporadic staff attendance issues throughout the return process. A second scenario considered a staff return after the second dose, which is approximately three weeks later and could potentially result in fewer disruptions in staffing and ultimately more continuity once in-person learning commences. However, this would continue to delay access to in-person instruction. Regardless of the timeline for expanding in-person learning for students, it was recommended by Committee members that staff without accommodations should return to their school buildings as soon as February 8th, if they have not already, to begin practicing the mitigation strategies they will need to employ while in our buildings. It was also suggested that teachers begin working with the students who will be returning in person while they are still learning virtually to help them be aware of and practice the mitigation strategies needed for in-person learning. We have seen outstanding examples of schools hosting orientations and using venues to begin to acclimate in-person learners to the new school environment. At this time, staff recommends that the Board consider holding a special meeting on Thursday, February 4th, so that staff may update the Board on the vaccine status and that the Board may finalize a student return timeline at that point. We understand that further delaying the finalization of a return timeline is inconvenient for our staff and our families. However, it is prudent to revisit this important decision at such a time as staff can provide the Board confirmation of sufficient doses to complete the first round of vaccinations. Again, that is due to be completed next Friday, February 5th. As a reminder, supply for each week's vaccine arrives on Tuesday of the given week. So next week's effort, which is the last week of the first dose effort, relies on adequate doses being received on February 2nd. And at this point, I'd like to pause and take any questions before we proceed.
Board members, any questions so far for Dr. Tigan?
Yes, ma'am. Where would you like to begin?
Well, I think what I'd like to do is I'll start with Ms. Cancela for questions on this part, and then we will kind of go around the horn again at the end. So Ms. Cancela?
Okay, thank you.
Questions thus far?
Yes, I do. First of all, I just want to express my support for the February 4th recommendation for a meeting. I would like to, and I've heard this from so many folks, that when there is a timeline, they would like for it to be held firm without delay. So I do support the meeting on the 4th for the Board. Now, let me move into first a statement. I realize not everyone is going to share my opinion, but I believe Henrico has led the way by continuing to prioritize the health and safety of everyone during this pandemic. Over here in Brooklyn District, I support that 100%. And I really like the recommendation of the Committee that our staff receive both doses. It'll be interesting to see as we go forward how others feel. What I'd like, if we could, whether it's Dr. Tigan or Dr. Cashwell, I would like for the community to understand how we got here with some of the confusion and perhaps with some of the communication we had earlier in the month.
Well, Ms. Cancela, if you don't mind, what I'd like to do is... Could we... Well, I'm trying to think the best way to handle that question. Because what I'd like to do is I'll speak to it first, if you don't mind. I really do feel that our Superintendent gave out some very accurate information to the community and the staff, as she has always done, continued to do that. The decision to further delay our opening of schools because the nurses were not in the building... And so, Dr. Tigan, if you would just answer a couple of questions clearly, I think this will answer Mrs. Cancela's question. The fact that the team, we had a team in place of nurses and other staff to help administer the vaccine, did that make it possible for us to get the vaccine at all and be on this timeline?
Absolutely. I believe that our nurses helping out with this initiative and allowing it to be a regional effort provided access to the vaccine, as well as access for our staff to the vaccine as a priority within this 1B group.
And as we've seen in other jurisdictions, it's likely that we would not have had it. I mean, for example, Chesterfield County just had to cancel their distribution. So what we're, I think, the message is, the question is, is could we have done the vaccine distribution if we hadn't used our nurses?
I think it would have been difficult with the number of staff that we bring forward to this event. You know, that we are one of the largest employers in the Henrico area. We have over 10,000 employees. And so that's a considerable number to get through vaccination clinics. And with the organization of Henrico County and the Emergency Operations Center, and then making it a regional event allowed us access to more vaccine. And, you know, I do not believe we would be sitting here saying by next Friday, all of our staff would be through the first dose, had it not been for the use of our nurses, the collaboration that we have between the county and schools. It has really made it all possible. And we are so appreciative of the priority they have put on making sure we can get our teachers inoculated and back in school.
Ms. Cancela, does that help?
It definitely does. I mean, it definitely does. And I appreciate us taking a few minutes just to explain it to folks because I know we've all spent time on the phone and answering emails and seeing public comment concerned about what happened. So I just think it helps all the information we can provide to the public as to provide a higher level of transparency. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'd like to know, what have we learned from the other Big Six Virginia school divisions? What are they doing in regard to vaccines? Virtual consistency versus expanding in-person learning with starts and stops? How have they dealt with barriers to staffing, transportation? What curriculum shortcuts might they have taken? What, how is Henrico handling this different? I know because I work with you and everyone on this Board and Dr. Cashwell, but I don't think our community understands that what some of the other divisions have done, perhaps, to get back in person.
Well, and when you really look at the Big Six, when I think of Fairfax, Loudon, Chesterfield, Virginia Beach, Prince William, and ourselves, you know, we're... Each division has taken a different approach based on their community, one their community needs, as well as their metrics at the time. You know, I can share with you some of when I know they're coming back to school at this point, which is also very fluid. I think every school division has had to remain fluid. You know, Fairfax, they're bringing back their kindergarteners on February 23rd. And I know it will be several weeks later, March 9th, before they'll bring back their first and second graders, and March 16th before they bring back their third through sixth graders. Now, they have their elementary schools are the K through 6. Their secondary schools, they have, I've not, I do not know of a timeline of when they're intending to bring them back. You know, Loudon County is, they're starting on February 16th to bring the limited in-person students back. We've actually never stopped bringing our limited in-person students back, except for the two weeks after the holidays, where we had the pause weeks after, a week after Thanksgiving and a week after winter break. And in Loudon, March 3rd is when they're anticipating bringing all of their students back to a hybrid model. Chesterfield is on track, I believe, to bring back limited pre-K through 5, starting next week, and anticipate more information coming from them in the near future as far as what their plans are for secondary. You know, the Prince William, they have, they brought back their kindergarteners back in November, about two weeks before Thanksgiving. Right after Thanksgiving, they brought back their first graders. Back in the middle of January, a couple of weeks ago, they brought back their second, third graders. And they're not bringing back their 4th through 6th or 9th graders until February 25th and 26th, their odd-even days. And then they're bringing back the rest, their 7th, 8th, 10th through 12th in March. You know, and when, so I mean, I think you see that everyone's handling it differently. I think the vaccination process has varied within communities. The number of staff that they have, I think in most of these localities, the schools are one of the more significant employers when you think of the number of staff that there are. And, you know, we often talk teachers, but it's a lot of staff that it takes to open up schools. We have had cafeteria workers, bus drivers, and custodians that have been working since the day we closed our doors back in March of 2020. And so there's a lot of other people besides teachers. So it ends up being quite a number of individuals. You know, and I know each locality has handled things differently with bus transportation, maybe not in the Big Six, but in others where they've come back to school. They've provided how many seats they could have and did it on a kind of a first-come, first-served. And so not all kids who wanted or needed transportation necessarily were provided that opportunity. You know, it's, so, you know, I think it's really hard to compare. But I would say that every school system has faced challenges within their communities around transportation, in-person learning, you know, staffing. And some, you know, when I look at our staffing, some of our staffing concerns, when we think about clinic assistants, classroom monitors, those are not positions we had pre-COVID. Those are positions to compensate for the changes that post-COVID, you know, right now is providing for us as we work to have kids in school for limited in-person and look to expand that to more students.
Thank you for that level of detail. It answers some of the questions that I've been trying to actually research and answer in telephone calls and via emails. So thank you for that. Are we concerned about the new strains of COVID and the effectiveness of the vaccine? And will we require double masking, given the new strains?
You know, we still watch as guidance comes out, and we really depend on the Virginia Department of Health. I mean, I know I heard this morning on the way in to work that, you know, that they're saying that the new strain, they're finding that the vaccines are actually providing a level, you know, of resistance for those individuals, as well as people who've already actually had COVID, that they're showing resistance to this newer strain. And so that's positive news, but I, you know, again, these are fluid situations. So we'll continue to lean on our Health Department. And these will be conversations when we meet again on Monday, looking for their guidance as to what we should do. The guidance on the double masking is also, it has been discussed in the public, but it hasn't come to the point of being a recommendation. But, you know, we will, we find the Virginia Department of Health, especially the Henrico Health District, to be such a great partner. And they will help lead us through those decisions as we continue along this path.
Okay. And then earlier, you alluded to the, or you referred to the remaining staff challenges. I'm interested in what barriers, once we get past shot two for me, what barriers may be left to expanding our in-person learning?
Well, we are, we do still have 28 clinic aid positions open out of 62. So while we continue to make progress, we still are seeking people there. And we, you know, I think that when there is a return, some of these positions are more likely to be filled in the interim. We find solutions to help compensate until we can hire staff.
Okay. And then I would just like to put forward, I know in some of our buildings, our principals are actually the emergency clinic aide, nurse aide, or nurse. And I would just like to put forward that I am concerned that they just be viewed as emergency-only, not a permanent staffing solution as part of our mitigation plan.
Absolutely.
And then I had some questions from constituents about the process used to determine vaccine priority order for our employees. I know internally, we know this information, but folks out in the community would like to know the prioritization process.
Yes. There was a prioritization process. We had taken all of our staff and those who were already working with the public, with students, whether it, whatever employee group, they were the highest priority, along with those teachers that were coming back for in-person. I will say, as the registration process unfolded with the number of people we had inputting, we looked at this first three-week window as for our priority one, and we were hoping priority two employees. We, when we started the process, not all of our employees had indicated their desire to have the vaccine. And, you know, realistically, we were informed on a Friday, late afternoon, that we would start on Tuesday with immunizations. And that was a holiday weekend. And so if people didn't listen to the messages, I mean, it wasn't that there weren't numerous messages that Mr. Jenk sent out throughout the weekend to keep everyone abreast. Emails went out, but not everyone checked their emails or listens to their messages coming from Henrico County, especially on a holiday weekend. But through this three-week period, even with the challenges we've had to date, every single one of our employees, whether it was priority group 1, 2, 3, or 4, has been able to be scheduled. And I think, again, that's a testament to the support from Henrico County and the emergency management team.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had for this section.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cancela. Reverend Cooper, do you have any comments or questions?
Not on this section. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Atkins?
Yeah, I do have a brief statement, I think, and just, you know, just being very candid with the public. The challenges of this pandemic is certainly training many of us to tap into a level of possibility, a level of creativity, to move us forward toward the goal of expanding in-person learning. I was there on day one and had the experience of watching our nurses and support staff in action. And they did nothing but demonstrate excellence in their ability to make this large effort a reality. I think that it would be wise to confirm the amount of vaccine that we get in on that Tuesday before any sort of timeline can be shared or even discussed. We know that there are shortages with the vaccine, and therefore, I do, I am in agreement to have a special... And therefore, I, I do, I am in agreement to have a special meeting to discuss next steps once we confirm how much of the vaccine that we receive to ensure that we would even have enough. So that's my, my brief statement.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Shay?
Thank you. I want to agree with my colleagues that I think it's important to have a special meeting next week. I don't want our constituents have to wait a whole another two weeks until our, our next scheduled meeting for us to continue these conversations on how to move our division forward. I have a, a couple of questions. But first I want to give a huge shout out to all of those who have made this vaccination event possible. From Dr. Tigan and Dr. Cashwell, working hard advocating to get us access to this vaccine. To, I saw Robin Gilbert when she popped on, it looks like she's out at the raceway today as we speak. And, and also to Sean Terry, who ran the tech team to figure out all the logistics to get people scheduled. It's really been a terrific effort and so efficient and so well done. So thank you. So a couple of questions. I believe you already asked the first one, but to just kind of re-clar, continue to clarify the point. How are we able to be prioritized for vaccine supply when other districts are struggling to acquire adequate doses?
Truthfully, the access, the increased access to vaccine is a result of having the regional incident management team. The more vaccine doses that are administered, the more vaccine that comes. And so that keeps the flow coming, not only for our staff, but for our community. As this weekend, they're doing a big event for those who are 65 and older with other health conditions. You know, that's, that's not, the Virginia Department of Health is really running that. But the fact that we could all make this happen is because Henrico is efficiently and effectively immunizing the, you know, the individuals and the various groups and doing it quickly. And that will keep vaccines coming.
That's awesome. So the utilization of our nurses has really moved us up on the priority, not only for us, but the entire community as they look at immunization events.
Yes.
Assuming that the supply comes in next Tuesday, as we're expecting, and we can have all of our staff vaccinated by February 5th. What are our, how are our nurses going to be utilized between February 5th? And then when they're giving the next dose?
They, they will be back in our buildings working and they may be working shifts at the Richmond Raceway evenings and weekends that we've given them permission to continue to help with the initiative outside their work hours. And if needed, you know, we would certainly collaborate with Henrico County and the emergency management team as best as we can if they need, continue to need our nurses' support.
So between, between our two, our two doses, if they're happening as, as scheduled, our nurses are no longer bound during their, at this time, during their school contract hours to the vaccination event. They won't be moving to other health districts to continue this effort.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Thank you. I think there's a lot, I have gotten quite a few emails about that and a lot of misinformation. So I appreciate you clarifying that. Did the health committee's recommendations on the impact of staff vaccination vary by level between elementary, middle and high school?
No, they have not varied. It's been about staff in general. Again, not just teachers, but staff.
Thank you. On slide four, when you were talking, you mentioned when community transmission is at the highest, we need to keep a careful eye on staffing and capacity considerations. Can you just explain briefly what you mean by staffing and capacity consideration?
Well, as we have seen from other school divisions that have been face-to-face, some of them since the beginning of the school year due to other challenges within their community, we, we anticipate that when we bring back more and more students, we probably will have at some point students to staff or staff to student transmission. And just like we do with the regular influenza season, we monitor attendance levels, you know, the absenteeism of students, the absenteeism of staff. And we work with the Virginia Department of Health to determine whether it's appropriate because of the amount of exposure or active infection that we close down a classroom. We close down the grade level. We close down a school building. You know, but it will be based on a case-by-case situation and what, what the numbers are within that situation.
So I get quite a few emails from constituents in my community that say they will do absolutely anything to open schools and keep them open. So, you know, it's sounding like to me, but for with this, what you just explained with the staffing and capacity considerations, partnered with a piece you were talking about earlier about the openings for clinic aides and classroom monitors, that one great way to support our schools staying open would be to apply for and help fill these positions. It would be a great way for the community to support schools being able to stay open once they're open. Is that a correct?
That is a correct statement, and I'm sure that there's an HR position in your future.
Yes, I will. I wish I knew the website. I would just spout it off. Well, I appreciate you taking time to answer those questions. I want to spend just a, a brief amount of time, you know, kind of walking through, kind of like Ms. Consella said, but how we got to where we are, you know? I am an educator by trade. I, I do have a degree in science, but it's in physics. It's not in medical sciences and I have a degree in education. So, you know, when I look at all of this data, I think all of us can find anyone saying anything on the internet, right? And so we have to rely on our vetted sources and our vetted experts that consult with us, including the VDH and those on the health committee. And so I want to, I've been working really hard to put the pieces together on how we got from the fall to the beginning of February, or January announcement to where we are at the end of January and kind of what that means as we move forward. So if y'all will, you know, bear with me a little bit, I'd like to walk that out a little bit. And Dr. Tigan, if you will interrupt me if I go awry.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So back in the fall, we were looking at the burden metric. That's the best metric that we were given at the time. It was that composite score that looked at not only community spread, but hospitals and all of that sort of thing. We were told at the time that that was the best metric we had. So we followed that metric, correct?
Correct.
Then, after that came out the metric, which kind of looked like stoplights, right? With the red and the green and the yellow. And we had this three-core metric, but we were told at the time to focus mainly on the community spread metric. So that's what we did, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So now the experts who have a whole career of knowledge, more, more than I do as someone just in the public, are saying that really it's the in-building mitigation that is the most important part, correct?
Correct. They have, you know, they have done research and have more data as time has gone on. Yes.
Well, and I think about how much we've learned in the last six months that we really didn't know about the virus. We really didn't know about school transmission. And we have a lot of data that had, is supporting the assertions of these experts. So they're telling us that it is the in-building mitigation that is the most important factor. And, you know, we have a fantastic mitigation strategy, which is evidenced by the fact, like you said, during both in-person learning and childcare in the buildings, we've had no child-to-teacher transmission this whole year so far. And so is that what led to the January 5th announcement that we were going to go back on the 25th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because I know a lot of the community felt like it was kind of whiplash, but it really was an evolving of expert recommendations and, you know, us following what the expert said.
Yes.
Okay. So then we get towards the end of February, or sorry, January. I'm getting ahead of myself in 2021. The next week, we found out we would have access to the vaccine.
The next, the next day.
Oh, okay. Yes, the next day. Okay.
That was, the next morning was the governor's announcement.
So our, when we changed our plan to utilize our nurses in order to have greater community access to this vaccine for the better good, essentially, we decided to postpone opening schools. Why?
I think some of that is related to, we weren't sure how long it was going to take to get everyone immunized with their first shot. We, there were just so many unknowns. And really, that's why there wasn't a timeline put on it. Because we, we felt like we needed to remain fluid through the process. And it has occurred much quicker than we actually anticipated it would.
Which is fantastic. So we didn't, the decision wasn't changed on, I believe it was January 12th. It was not changed because the mitigation in the building was, it was decided it wasn't safe, correct?
Correct.
So the in-building mitigation is still safe. So wouldn't it be then having the vaccine on top of that is just improved mitigation, even up higher than when we were told it was safe on January 5th?
Correct. It was the fact of that vaccine becoming available, becoming available to our staff and our nurses helping with that initiative.
Which I totally support using our nurses for the initiative. I think it was the right thing to do. It was the right thing for our staff. It was the right thing for our community. But I wanted to lay those pieces out on how those decisions were made and how they all locked together. So I really appreciate your time and my colleagues' time on letting me kind of transparently and with your help, walk through that for the community on how all those pieces came together. And with that, I am done. Thank you, Dr. Tigan.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Shay. Before we go on to the second part, I'll take just a moment. I wanted to reiterate some of the things that we've said, but to mainly express some gratitude to our health committee. Ms. Atkins sits on our health committee, so we appreciate her representing the board that way. To Dr. Tigan and Robin Gilbert, obviously tireless work. And to Dr. Cashwell and all the team for the work that you have been doing to keep the information flowing. It's, it's always accurate. It is always as soon as we can possibly get it. And so for that, we are extremely grateful. And to our nurses, the, the fact that our nurses went through special training, they have gone the extra mile and have pivoted from their normal job duties to go out and inoculate everyone. I am sure everybody has, has received messages from our teachers and our staff members. And several of them have, have posted pictures on social media. I've had a couple of teachers send me a picture with their little ticket showing that they got their vaccine. And with this huge smiles on their faces, they are so appreciative of being prioritized, being valued, which we have, you know, we've said this time and time again, that we are putting health and safety first. And, you know, basically, it's a shot in the arm that is proving that we are really doing that. And, and I think it is a shining example of how when we all work together, things can go so well. The, the teachers and people, and, and I'm sure those of you who are able to go to the vaccination event was so organized, so well-done, and everybody's so appreciative of that. But going back to our nurses, I just want to be sure that we have gotten the message across correctly, that our, our nurses were essential in this process, that this would not have happened for our employees. And if we hadn't provided, or helped to provide, I should say, the structure to administer the vaccine. And we're seeing this in, as the breakdown in other communities. So we have done that, and it's not only for the benefit of our teachers and our staff, but as Mrs. Shay said, the community as a whole. And, and, you know, like I said earlier, Dr. Cashwell and her team have been so proactive in getting correct and accurate information out there. And we pride ourselves in doing that. And we, as a board, are so proud of their efforts and the work that they have done that is, is truly heroic. There, I remember getting one email in particular where the team was working over an entire weekend to put this time together. I mean, the, the fact that there's no time when they are not working is amazing. But I, I just think it's a testament to, that like Dr. Tigan said, it's community and county cooperation, but it's also our staff stepping up in a way that they have never done before. And so anybody who has, you know, in my opinion, and I think in the opinion of our board, who has expressed any concerns whatsoever for the accuracy of what we're putting out there, we are putting out there everything that we can as soon as we get it. And change is hard, and that is the thing that we have, we have as a community, I think, really struggled with. Because like Dr. Tigan said, we had a plan one day and the next day we found out about the vaccinations. We are having to turn on a dime and make changes. And it may come across as, and some people may interpret change as, as something that we're not being forthright or we're not being accurate, but it couldn't be further from the truth. We are, we're doing it as, as a timely fashion as we can with the most accurate and up-to-date information that we have. And, and I think that's been our standard, that is something that we have high expectations for, for our superintendent on down. So, but I, I truly believe that, a big thank you to the team for getting this all done. So we're going to let Dr. Tigan continue with her presentation. And then we'll go around again and see if anybody has any follow-up. So we're going to do athletics next. Dr. Tigan?
Yes, ma'am. The health committee can, you know, they continue to support their earlier recommendation to participate in VHSL's fall, the fall athletic schedule, with participation contingent on strict adherence to the mitigation strategies outlined in each sports transition plan developed by John Carroll, the educational specialist for student activities, in collaboration with the directors of student activities, as well as the directors of school leadership. This includes the wearing of masks, except when on the court or field during competition. Should there be any cases involving the coaches or the athletes, we would follow our normal contact tracing protocols. This could impact, you know, as we know, just like we talked about classrooms, we know that it could impact team participation and result in full teams being quarantined. Just wanted to make sure everyone knew that everyone understood the consequences of allowing our students to play these outdoor, mostly outdoor sports. Football and competition cheerleading are slated to begin their season on February 4th. And then our other fall sports will begin on February 15th. Our athletes will be playing a county schedule that includes all nine Henrico County high schools and Maggie Walker. This is a result of Hanover County School's decision, an announcement that was made earlier today, that part of their mitigation plan is not to play teams from other school divisions. And so that's why we'll be playing schools within our division, since Hanover will not be playing with our schools. And we respect that decision for, that they've made for their school division. As middle school athletics are paused for this year, or I mean, not for this year, but for the fall season, eighth graders, as we've stated before, would have the option to try out for the high school JV teams at their zone high schools. And I'll pause and, and see if there's any questions about athletics. I do have John Carroll, our, our educational specialist for school activities, is with us. And he'll be able to answer any questions that you all may have. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Dr. Tigan.
Thank you, John, for being with us. Okay, we'll start with Ms. Consella again. Any questions about the athletics?
Yes, I just have a few. We disclosed previously, and I know this to be the case, but can we go back over why middle school sports, why the decision was made previously not to hold fall sports for middle school? I believe there are staffing considerations and things like that to address?
Yes, ma'am. There, there are a number of, of issues with withholding middle school sports. First of all, you know, we, we talked about logistics. There were concerns from the schools about students being able to get back up for practice, because obviously that's a little bit different than high school. that's a little bit different than high schools when they can't drive. Um, you know, some schools had some serious concerns. As far as athletic staffing at the high school level, there are more people that are involved in the athletic department to help with the mitigation, uh, practices and to make sure things are be done appropriately. Um, I would say one of the bigger concerns that we have a- as well as facilities. Um, you know, as you know, our middle school, um, schedule, we don't schedule in February and March. And the reason we don't do that is because we don't have lights on our tennis courts or on our football fields. So, for outdoor athletics, which are mainly fall sports are, um, you know, daylight savings time would have a huge impact on getting through even a practice, but certainly through a, a contest. Um, as you know, we're fortunate enough to have turf fields, uh, at the high school level, but at the middle school level, it would be grass. With the weather that we have, the snow and the rain, you know, that brings up some safety issues, the amount of time that you can practice. And a middle school rule is we don't play during holidays. So, while the high schools may be going through spring break, you know, the middle school would be condensed even more because there would be, um, no practices or games during spring break. So, there are a number of factors that went into the decision for fall. Um, it's just a, a, a different time period considering that, um, you know, we typically don't play outside sports during that time and, and the challenges that would come up with students not being in school, um, potentially five days a week, with the fact that our facilities don't have the lighting, and with the fact that our staffing to be able to meet the mitigation practices and all, uh, might be at a little bit of a disadvantage when we first start because just the number of people that can help out in the athletic department.
Thank you so much for providing clarity. I, I just know that there are some folks listening today that you just answered a lot of questions, um, for them and hopefully some others as well. I know I asked this at the last meeting and I'll ask it again. Um, do we expect, is, do we expect the plan for fall or spring sports to change outside of, uh, perhaps things associated with the mitigation plan or, um, any cases that outbreaks we may have? We expect to play the sports, right? We expect to play, uh, V H S L?
Y- yes, ma'am. We are, fall sports, we're moving forward next week with, with our first tryouts. Um, you know, as Dr. Tiggen said, on the 15th will be the second group for the spring sports. We intend on going forward, you know, with the V H S L. And we are, obviously, we're discussing the middle school spring sports currently to determine what we're going to, to do with them in the fall.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, that's it.
Um, Reverend Cooper, any questions on athletics?
Yeah, real quick, Ms. Carroll. So, so how intimately involved were the athletic directors in assisting you along with their building leaders in the plan that we're, we, we, um, are following for, for our sports?
Yes, sir. That's a great question. We received guidelines back in the summer from the, uh, Virginia High School League and the V D H, Virginia Department of Health, on how we could return to participation. We took those guidelines. We have probably met every week to every two weeks to create mitigation plans. Um, we actually have about a 26-page mitigation plan overall for the county. And then we did sport-specific transition plans for each group. So, the, the D S As were involved in the, in the, in the mitigation plans and creating those, brought up any, uh, pros and cons of the plans, but, but we did work together to create the mitigation plans.
So, do you feel that the, um, the, the, the athletic directors and the building leaders, um, feel very confident in what we are projecting and what we are following?
Yes, sir. I think for the, for the factors, you know, it's an old saying in sports, you control the factors you can control. And, and we will control what, what we have to. I think we have a great plan in place. Um, and we will certainly do everything we can within the school environment to make it as safe as possible. Um, and we have had not only coaches meetings, but we will have parent meetings to explain to the parents the changes in the, uh, in what athletics will look like this year. Um, and, you know, the administrative all have copies of the plan. So, I, I feel confident we will be able to do this, um, you know, in a very safe manner.
Thanks for your hard work, Ms. Carroll. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Atkins?
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Carroll, for all of your work in this. Can you please share with me the involvement from the parents of the athletes? Have they shared their thoughts with you?
Uh, I have not. I have had, you know, some emails and things when decisions have been made, but, but indirectly, uh, I know that the, the director of student activities, they're having parent meetings. I know, as a matter of fact, I'll give you an example. Tucker had one last night. What they did was they took questions from the parents, um, through the chat room of a teams meeting. They're getting back to the parents on those responses. They said that last night was very positive. Every Tucker parents are excited. Um, they're looking forward to moving forward, um, you know, and, and just have some in-depth questions about our plan and, you know, which is certainly out there to see. Um, and, and the, the D S As will answer any questions that the parents have in regards to concerns with the upcoming season.
Thank you. Can you please share that schedule with me? We don't have to do it in this form, but I would like to see the schedule to ensure that all high schools receive that level of engagement and that it's done equitably. Uh, so at some point, at a later point, I'd love to see the schedule to ensure that we're being equitable in those conversations and the parent engagement.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. I will get you the list of the, of the parent meeting dates and times.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Shea?
Hey, Mr. Carroll. It is great to see you, even though it's virtually. Um, Ms. Kinsella covered my first question. I really appreciate your in-depth, um, explanation on why middle school athletics are different than high school athletics. Um, I heard you mention that spring sports are being considered for middle school. Um, and so, just to be clear, the middle school is following the same quote-unquote "schedule" as the V H S L high school hypothetically, where fall would be right now and spring would be a abbreviated schedule later. So, we're considering that abbreviated later spring schedule for middle school.
Yes, ma'am. That, that would be correct. We're in talks now to take a, a look at that. You know, as I said, it would probably have to occur sometime after, uh, spring break, uh, obviously, you know, because one of the things we, we'd want to avoid if we decide to go in that direction is to overlap with what's being done at the high schools. So, we would, we would need to figure that out.
Right. Thank you so much. That was, that, your answer there was so informative to Ms. Kinsella. I learned a lot and took a lot of notes. So, I appreciate that. Uh, my other question has to do with, so, um, Dr. Tiggen mentioned that, um, players will be expected to, um, have strict adherence with the mitigation plan. My question for you is, is that mitigation plan, is there a sort of, maybe a sort of code of conduct for the athletes that include COVID-safe expectations off the field, like outside of practice, uh, in order to keep all players and coaches safe?
Well, that, that's a, that's a great question. I will tell you this. One of the things that we talked about in the meeting with the, with the D S As, that really needs to be reiterated in the parent meeting is for us to do this successfully, we're all going to have to be on the same team. And as I said before, we can control what's going on in practice, but the community involvement outside is going to be a key piece because, uh, you know, if things are done on the weekends that we can't control and then that's brought into practice, that could impact an entire team. So, it is one of our points of emphasis in the parent meetings. Um, and it is something that, that we are going to speak. And the coaches I know have already spoken with their athletes that, you know, it is a major point of emphasis that, that to get through this season and to be able to do it. Because quite honestly, when you look at some of the other sports, uh, localities and sports that have participated in the wintertime, they have taken quite a few pauses and have had some real issues. Um, and so, we're, we're hoping to avoid that as much as possible, even though it may be a reality. But to do that, we're going to have to have everybody on the same page and on board, even when they're not at school doing the right things.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely important. And, you know, looking at how, um, college athletes, um, you know, the expectations college athletes and pro athletes have had in order to make these sports happen, I think really, um, communicating those expectations very clearly to our parents. It is a privilege to participate in sports. And, um, I am glad that, you know, the students, especially from the mental health aspect, um, will have some opportunity to do that. But it, but it comes with expectations. And like you said, we're all on the same team, um, and the actions of one affect the outcome for all. So, thank you for that, your work on that, um, and continuing to get that message out. That's all for me.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and Dr. Tiggen, let's continue on.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll, and thank you, Madam Chair. At this point, I would like to introduce Dr. Ingrid Grant, Chief of School Leadership. And she will share the initial work of her team collaborating with the Division of Learning Team around learning recovery as parents begin to ask about summer plans. Dr. Grant?
Thank you, Dr. Tiggen. Good afternoon. Given the erupt, abrupt emergency closure of the 2019-2020 school year and the unique nature of the predominantly virtual 2020-21 school year, we continue to monitor student progress to address issues related to learning loss and/or learning gaps. Current efforts are underway to allow for not only daily remediation and assistance such as through extended service time at the end of the school day, but also more chances for one-on-one support virtually and in-person. School administrators are working with their staff to plan for expanding our current limited in-person experiences to include students beyond the o- original prioritized groups with, with an express focus on students who are not making grade-level progress at this time. Looking forward to ensure that students are prepared for the next grade level, the Division of School Leadership and the Division of Learning are working on plans to address learning gaps and learning loss through a rigorous in-person summer academy. Supports for students in K-5 would be provided for students performing in the lowest quartile in reading and mathematics. Students in grades six through eight who were not meeting grade-level expectations would be expected to participate in summer academy before being promoted to the next grade. High school students continue to have access to remedial coursework as well as academic extensions. E S L and Extended Year Services, E S Y, would be included in the summer programming lineup. Traditional high school programming will also be offered from remediation to acceleration. The teams continue to explore other possibilities to propel students forward. For example, they are discussing other potential approaches such as expanding learning time for all students in 21-22. This additional learning time could mean extended school days or an earlier start to the 2021-2022 school year. The administration continues to engage in these planning efforts and bring, and will bring the board any recommendation that may necessitate examining an earlier calendar or schedule changes for school year 21-22 by March. Again, efforts and planning related to school year 21-22 are exploratory o- only at this point, with no formal recommendations for a calendar adjustment is being made at this time. And now, we'll turn it back over to Dr. Tiggen to wrap up the presentation.
Well, and I'll pause and see if anyone has any questions for Dr. Grant.
Any questions, board members, for Dr. Grant? Ms. Shea?
Thank you. Um, I'm really excited to hear about the expansion of in-person learning. I know I brought that up two weeks ago as a priority for me, um, especially for our elementary school students until we can, um, return to the building. Um, when should families plan to hear from their school if they're included in the in-person expansion?
Currently, our, uh, school leaders are working with their teams to identify students beyond their original target group who would benefit. And, um, parents should hear directly from their building principal about the possibility of their child participating, um, in additional, um, in-person learning. And transportation will also be provided if, um, the child participates.
Thank you. Um, so if a family has a question about maybe what in-person expansion might look like at their school or if their child is being, um, included, they should direct those questions to their school principal? Or is there a better place?
To their school principal.
Thank you so much. That is all I have.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Atkins? Ms. Atkins, we can't hear you unmute.
Thank you. Uh, I'm not sure if these next line of questions fall into this particular category. However, when I see learning recover rates, it does sort of fit. But my questions really are around missing assignments. Do we have any trend data on students that are failing due to missing work?
We do have our, um, D N F report. I believe we submitted that in our quarterly, um, update on, you know, where our students stood at the end of their first, um, semester.
Thank you for that. I'll be sure. If you can send that to me, I may already have it, but if you can send it to me, uh, because I'm curious how that impacts recovery. I know in a previous board meeting, we had a discussion around assignment extension and coming up with a formalized way to make sure that, uh, students that request an extension in one class isn't different from requesting it in another class. And it can be pretty complicated because it's based upon the topic. It's based upon some of the teacher's expectation. Uh, is there any updates on trying to formalize a way that students can request assignment extensions?
We do have a guidance document for our, um, principal leaders. I can forward that to you and see if that meets, um, what you're talking about.
That would be appreciated. I am still getting, um, text messages and calls from students and, and asking what the process itself is. And so, I, I'd love to be able to, in very simple terms, first of all, there would be to speak with your teacher about it. But on the other part of that is because we're virtual and trying to, students trying to connect with teachers and understand expectations, it would be good for me able to, me to be able to share that in some very simple ways. So, I really appreciate that. The other question is, are we capturing data on how many students are taking advantage of teacher office hours?
I would have to, um, get with the, um, Division of Leadership Directors and to see where we are with that and get back with you. But teachers are expected to have office hours, um, to assist students when needed.
Yeah, I have, have heard, much, many have shared, you know, that it is a struggle on both ends, uh, to cut the cameras on, to develop a connection, a relationship with students. And that's on both sides. And so, I'll share, uh, some feedback that you may find helpful as teachers try to connect with students and students trying to connect with teachers, uh, too. The first one is perhaps reimagining office hour, so that it's an opportunity particularly on the secondary level. It's also an opportunity for students just to get to know their teachers. Perhaps they can use, of course, some of that time for medi- remediation or to catch up, but also offer the opportunity for students to give feedback. Um, um, what we share was oftentimes a student will go to remediation or to go to get help and the teacher is providing that service to the student. But it would be lovely for students to be able to offer to the teacher, uh, feedback as well, particularly in the virtual setting. I, I think, you know, that's something to definitely be explored.
And I will discuss with our, um, our directors and how we can better support our schools in that.
And so, I'll give you the title of one that someone just texted me, you know, maybe instead of calling it office hours, it could be titled peer feedback workshops. So, you can take that as, as wherever you want to, but just a lovely way for teachers and students to connect and building just the relationships.
Thank you.
My pleasure. And that's all that I have.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Reverend Cooper, any comments at this point?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm just real curious about the summer academy on Dr. Grant. So, I'll let you all kind of get to work with the first draft on it. Um, but I'm so grateful, um, that you were very specific in mentioning gaps and loss, uh, because we do know that for those, um, who were, um, a little bit behind prior to COVID-19, that this pandemic is, has exacerbated, you know, where they were and where they are now. And so, we need to take every effort we can to assist them to not just, you know, coming back to pre-COVID, but exceeding where they were pre-COVID. So, I look forward to kind of talking to staff and then Doc Cashwell to see what our thoughts are, the framework, and, and putting the meat on the bone, if you will. So, I just, I'll, I'll just hold until I kind of get a sense of where we're going and what we're going to do.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Kinsella, did you have anything at this point?
Actually, I do. Um, Dr. Grant, thank you for the presentation. Um, when the timeline was announced, and I, I don't know if this really falls into what you just presented, but I'm certain, um, the team has any, if you don't have an answer, then, um, you can get back to me with an answer on this. When the timeline was announced in October, um, and, and families made choices whether to be virtual or expanded in-person when we do go back in, in-person, um, do, have we thought about, will stu- Um, will, will students still experience teacher changes this, this far into- here, um, will, will students still experience teacher changes this, this far into the academic year?
There might be some, certain circumstances that they might experience, some student, uh, some teacher changes. However, a lot of our teachers have, um, selected to do the hybrid parallel model. And so they're not as, um, greater numbers as, as we thought we were gonna have. So a, a lot of our kids will be able to remain with, um, their current teachers, but there will be some, um, teacher changes.
Okay.
And really, the plan is to stick with what, what has been planned previously.
Okay. I've just heard about that from a few constituents, so I wanted to, to make sure I asked that. And then when, with the end of second quarter tomorrow, when might the board expect a presentation on, on second quarter results?
We, uh, we're expected to have everything, um, due to us by February the 12th, I believe. And then soon after that, we will be able to update the board.
Okay. And then in listening to, um, your explanation, I know throughout this process, we, we've been concerned about, um, those for which, those for whom virtual learning is especially difficult. But looking at your summer academy, um, it's those who, who are struggling the most. Do we expect to expand it greater than we normally would? Because that's what summer academy usually has been. Having been a partici-, uh, a mom of a participant in summer academy, it's always been for those that need it most. Are we looking at expanding the enrollment perhaps in additional sites at this point? Or have we just really begun conversations?
Um, we are looking into that. We just begun conversation. And a lot of it also will be dependent upon how much personnel we have available during the summer, um, the summer school. The more teachers we have, the more opportunities we will have to bring our students in during the summer.
And it's also, we've had conversations of how important it is to have access to the summer programs within the, the community. So trying to really make sure we have additional sites across the county.
Thank you for that. I mean, if I just may say, I've had, um, numerous requests from the, from, from K-12 for robust, whatever the plans are, is that they be robust. Um, and then lastly, um, families with struggling students, can you please just, um, I know Ms. Atkins just, um, talked about extended, uh, services time. Can you please explain some of the supports that we've put in place this year to help our students and families that are struggling virtually with academics? Um, via emails and, and calls from counselors and things of that nature?
Yes, ma'am. Our teachers reach out to us, our parents, our principals are reaching out to our, our parents. In addition to, um, staff members are making home visits to, um, so that we can reach the kids that are not necessarily always, you know, in tune to day-to-day virtual learning. Um, one of the other things that we are, we're doing right now is trying to increase our limited in-person. And before, like elementary, for example, we were doing a lot of it from 1:00 to 3:30. Now our, um, schools have the opportunity to bring in kids even earlier, like 8:00 in the morning and work with their teachers, um, during the regular school day. In addition to students that are not meeting expectations on the secondary level that might have, um, Fs, um, they're getting opportunities also to come in and work with their teachers. Um, where we concentrated in the beginning with limited, um, in-person with specific groups, now we're opening it up to all students that might need that, um, additional assistance.
And Dr. Grant, I think you could easily say that with our administrators and our teachers, it's kind of been a grace-with-grades-type philosophy, where teachers are allowing students to do retakes, providing extensions, really trying to understand some of the challenges that our students have at this time, and working to help them find success throughout the process.
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Thank you so much. And then lastly, do we, have we heard anything yet about any SOL waivers for this school year?
From the st-, from the state level, but not the federal level.
Okay.
Ms. Consella, was that all?
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Grant, you said, I just want you, if you don't mind, to expand on that last statement. You said you've heard from the state level. What was it that we've been told, or is the, is there more to come?
There's more to come, um, with it.
Yeah, that's what I figured. Okay, um, and Dr. Tiggen, if you wanna, um, continue? And then I think we're approaching the last part.
Um, yes, ma'am. Um, I'm sorry that I seem to have lost my cursor and the ability to, um, change the slide, but the next slide was strictly our HCPS meeting, Health Committee meeting schedule. We will be meeting every week on Monday throughout the month of February. So that'll be February 1st, which is Monday, February 8th, February 15th, and February 22nd. And we look forward to bringing you a vaccine update on February 4th, after, um, we get information from the Virginia Department of Health on Tuesday. And so at this point, um, I just would like to echo some of the gratitude you shared for our nurses and all of the individuals that helped with, um, scheduling the vaccines and the people who worked on a, a holiday weekend and a holiday itself to make sure that everything happened. It, it has been a true pleasure, um, to work with such great and dedicated people. So with that, um, that's the end for today for the Health Committee, and I will be looking forward to bringing back another report next week if we meet.
Thank you, Dr. Tiggen. Uh, before we let Dr. Tiggen go, board members, are there any other questions or items for discussion that, um, you've thought of while others were talking or anything?
Can I ask one follow-up question?
Absolutely. Reverend Cooper?
Dr. Tiggen, will there be a cost associated with the summer academy?
I do not, I don't, there are always some costs for some of the high school courses that are extensions. Like some of our students opt to take some college-level courses that they get, um, credit for high school as well as college. But for remedial coursework, there has not been a charge. We did not charge last summer night and expect that we would use some of our CARES dollars to help, um, provide that same service this year.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Tiggen?
Um, I have one briefly, and this might be for Ty, the, Dr. Tiggen or the broader board. Um, so we're planning to move a whole, forward with the special meeting.
Well, that, that is exactly what our next topic needs to be, right?
So if we, if we move forward with that special meeting next week, do we expect to leave that meeting with a date of return?
Dr. Tiggen, would that be your expectation?
Yes, I believe that would be the expectation of the leadership team. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Dr. Cashwell, would that be your thought as well?
Yeah, certainly staff's recommendation is time, uh, at this time is that we do meet, uh, holding a special board meeting, uh, next Thursday, as suggested. And it sounds like there's consensus from this board to, to move that direction in order to, uh, do two things. One, provide this board confirmation of, uh, the, uh, delivery of that, uh, the doses to cover that last week. As we've anticipated, we would be finishing that first round of vaccines on February 5th, so we will know when this board meets again next week, be able to provide you that update, as well as establish, uh, a timeline.
And, and I think legal is right there. They can verify. I don't think we need to vote in order to call a special meeting. We just need to do it. So, um, as we have, seems to have reached a consensus, um, therefore I'll call a special meeting of the board next Thursday, February 4th, and we'll set the time. Everybody just nod your heads, 1:00? Okay, works, works for everybody. Um, but we will, um, plan on the agenda for that meeting, hearing from, um, our Health Committee. Again, the latest, um, information that we have. And we will hope to develop a timeline for going forward. And, um, we will, uh, be sharing that announcement. We'll get our clerks to give notice of that meeting, and we'll share an agenda, as we always do for our Thursday meetings, we will share it by this, uh, by tomorrow afternoon, so it can go live and, and this process would follow. Any questions about our special meeting or discussion about that?
Sorry. Uh, one more point of quick clarity for Dr. Tiggen. Um, can you just clarify the two timelines that will be discussed next week?
Yes, ma'am. And I'll refer back just so that I don't make any errors.
I just wanna pull it out for our audience listening, so they know kind of exactly what's being considered.
Right. The, the, the one scenario would be to, staff would return after their first dose, which potentially would be mid-February. Um, and then the second scenario would be for staff to return after their second dose. But there are mitigating situations with each one of those that, you know, I'm sure that you'll consider in that decision. It, it sounds simple, but it's, it's not as simple as it sounds.
Absolutely. Thank you for providing that clarity.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think we can all agree that nothing about this has been as simple as it seems on the surface from day one. And, um, I, I, I think I can speak for all of us that the, um, the, the whole community is indebted to the work that you and the team have done on the, on the Health Committee and to Dr. Cashwell for, for representing us so well and, and making things happen. It, it is, um, cha-, like I said earlier, change is hard, and we've had to make changes. But we've done them with the best information that we had. And, and I've said this a million times, there is no book sitting on a shelf, this is what you do in a pandemic. So we are doing the best that we can, and really appreciate the fact that you're bringing the best recommendations of the Health Committee to us in the time.
Thank you. It truly comes from the superintendent on, you know, as far as her leadership, and the leadership of the board is so critical in everything we've done for the last almost year.
Ms. Consella, did you have another comment?
Yes, actually I have a question of Dr. Tiggen. Um, I'm, I'm already getting messages asking, uh, will we, I know we mentioned in the presentation, will teachers be mandated to be in the building on February 8th? And of course, those, it would be, if you have an accommodation, of course not. However, um, hearing from some folks wondering if they're gonna be mandated back in the buildings on February 8th to start getting used to the mitigation strategies.
That was the recommendation from the Health Committee. Yes, ma'am.
And so that will, will the board be discussing this further next week at the special meeting? Or that is what's gonna happen?
Um.
I think maybe Dr. Cashwell needs to address that.
Well, as I say, staff will still have, you know, I know that we still work with flexibility, um, and working, encourage our teachers if they have some situation that is pertinent to them and, and that they go and they talk to their administrative team, their principal. It's really critical that those conversations occur. Um, it's hard to, to make blanket statements when you don't know the situations of every staff member.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Cashwell, did you have a comment on that as well, I'm sure?
I think, yeah, Dr. Tiggen, uh, is headed where I was with my comment, which is simply that, you know, I think the Health Committee's recommendation is certainly powerful in that we are preparing for staff to be in our buildings and follow our mitigation plans. Of course, that's assuming staff who don't have accommodations to work, uh, virtually. And so it is important that, uh, staff have an opportunity to be in our buildings, see the new procedures, uh, and guidelines that are in place, and begin to understand those. And, and a large number of our staff are already, have already had the opportunity to do that and have, and some are even teaching, uh, virtually from our building. So, um, I think their point is well-taken in that we want to, as we're working to, uh, move towards that in-person timeline, uh, create every opportunity for our staff to be able to do that. To do mitigation well means becoming familiar with it and having an opportunity to practice it. And so, uh, that recommendation is well-taken. We provided, even with the delay of the last timeline, uh, a similar message, which was, you know, we're ready for our staff to return. We certainly understand that, uh, we have staff with any number of considerations, childcare needs, et cetera. And as we change those timelines for our in-person return, that may affect their own children, uh, and there may, may be other mitigating factors. So certainly encourage our teachers to work with their administrators on the flexibility they need, but also, uh, strongly encourage our teachers to be able to become familiar with the mitigation, uh, plans in their building, and this is other staff, I should say, not just teachers, uh, regarding in-person learning, so that everyone's familiar when the time comes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, board members? Okay, thank you, Dr. Tiggen, and.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right. Dr. Cashwell?
All right. Uh, again, thank you, Dr. Tiggen, Health Committee, uh, our other presenters, uh, John Carroll and also Dr. Grant.